Meeting called to order. Please join Ms. Luther Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty for all. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Chun. Ms. Del Rossi. Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Lay. Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Good to see everyone here tonight. Everybody looks nice and fresh. Well, start with the meeting with the minute. Need a motion to approve the special and the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of September 21st, 2022, and to place them on file by Ms. Chun, second by Ms. Del Rossi, on favor of the eye, opposed by no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. Now go to four, permission to enter. Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Lay. Any comments or question? Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Chun. Ms. Del Rossi. Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent approved.
Now I would like to do a memorials and a moment of silence for Sheila Singer, Well, begin the motions section now. Six point one was thought by Ms. Chun, request the superintendent develop a legislative agenda for the committee's consideration, which advances the policy interest of Lowell's student and families at the state level ahead of the next legislative session. Second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Chun.
Registered speakers, two.
We have a registered speaker.
Two.
Would you like the speaker to go first, Ms. Chun? Like a Madam Secretary, please call the registered speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Superintendent and School Committee members. My name is Yasmin Wauprefard and I am the coordinator for Lowell Votes. I want to thank Committee Member Chun for putting this motion forward as it relates to an important piece of legislation that could have a profound impact on Lowell students and families by providing critical funds to our schools and public transportation system. The Fair Share Amendment, or ballot question one, will generate an estimated $2 billion annually to Massachusetts, which would be constitutionally allocated to public education and transportation, such as helping students recover from the pandemic, creating expanded and more frequent routes for the LRTA, and repairing our crumbling roads. For years, Massachusetts communities of colors have been harmed by inequitable and inadequate access to transportation and public education. Now the pandemic has heightened these economic and racial inequalities that prevent us all from prospering. We need new sources of revenue. The Fair Share Amendment provides us this by creating a modest tax increase of 4% only on the portion of a person's annual income over $1 million. Now let's be clear about who we're talking about here. This is only a tax increase on the top 1% of Massachusetts residents. 99% of us won't pay a penny more, but we'll all feel the benefit of improved public schools and pre-K programs, bridges that residents don't fear driving over, better sidewalks and bike paths, and fast and reliable public transportation. Lowell deserves all of these things and more, and it's time for million-dollar earners to pay their fair share to support our economic recovery and the public services we all depend on. I hope I have demonstrated for you tonight the importance of this amendment passing to Lowell students and their families, and request that motion six point one tonight be amended to include endorsement for the Fair Share Amendment. Although it is ultimately in the voters' hands this November, we look to the committee's leadership to help raise awareness among Lowell voters and demonstrate the importance of this ballot question in improving our schools, our transportation infrastructure, and our economy. We hope that you will consider publicly endorsing the Fair Share Amendment tonight and consider voting yes on ballot question one this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Johanna Danis, please.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent, and School Committee members. My name is Johanna Danis, and I'm here as a community worker and as a civic engagement and community organizer coordinator at Coalition for a Better Acre and as resident of Lowell. I live at 281 Boylston Street. I'm speaking in regards to motion six point one. I'm speaking on six point one and here to present some information. Six point one references advancing the policy interests of Lowell students and families at the state level ahead of the next legislative session, and I want to bring to the attention of the committee something that Coalition for a Better Acre and Lowell Votes is supporting on a statewide level. The Fair Share Amendment will be question one on the Massachusetts ballot this November. The Fair Share Amendment will create a 4% tax increase on the portion of a person's annual income above $1 million, and if passed, that additional money would be codified into the state's constitution to specifically be allocated towards transportation and public education. Taxing those who make over $1 million, 4% more on their taxes would generate an additional $2 billion to the state. To note, this tax increase would only affect the top earners in Massachusetts. 99% of taxpayers would not be paying any more on their taxes, and this tax increase is related to salary only. Lowell students and schools deserve the best, and one way we can make sure they are provided with the highest quality education is by bringing more money to the state and into the city. We're asking the committee to publicly endorse the Fair Share Amendment as it would generate this additional money for the state to be used for public education and is in the interest of Lowell public schools and would benefit Lowell public students, parents, and teachers. Thank you for your consideration and vote yes on question one in November.
Thank you both. Ms. Chun.
Yes, I would like to again thank you to our two speakers for coming in to speak. It has brought to my attention about the Fair Share Amendment, and that's the one thing that I want our families to raise awareness and have some clarity on the importance of one of the legislative that's happening in our state of Massachusetts, and one that I, you know, for us as school committee members, that this is something that I think we should have our families be well aware of the importance of why Fair Share Amendment, and by having our two speakers here, it just gives more clarity into why that is important to especially in Lowell public schools and to Lowell in general. So, thank you again to our speakers, and also I would like to have any other members who would like to help me in on understanding of this as well. And the one thing is, where can our families go to to understand this? Our viewers to know which website can they go to have further information on the Fair Share Amendment. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by members? Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that this is a good motion, and I look forward to getting some recommendations for the administration about other legislative issues that would be good for us to support. But I would also like to say for my colleagues who are, this is their first year, we have, you know, serving on the board, we have in the past brought forward specific letters that go to our legislators supporting, like this might be one that you would want to bring forward in a motion either as an amendment to the motion you have tonight or at our next meeting. It won't be too late for the election, will it? Oh, no. It's only beginning of October.
We have time.
Right. So, we have sent a letter to our legislature, our state legislators, saying and voted on issues like this that we feel strongly as a board would be important not only to raise awareness, but to also let our legislators at the State House know this is an important issue for the Lowell public schools. So, that's another option going forward, is to have a specific motion, that a letter be sent. But I do look forward to getting other information. I think the Mass Association of School Committees also has a strong advocacy arm that promotes certain legislative initiatives that would be helpful for us to support. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion. I don't know if you want to consider that or leave it the way it is. Ms. Chun.
I'll think about it, but definitely that's a very good option that we can look forward to.
Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion's a little bit confused me a little bit because it didn't say anything about fair share. I'm not against Fair Share Act, but when you guys, the speakers come up and speak on this motion, on this particular, on this fair share, I was a little bit confused. So, if we vote tonight, if we vote to support this motion, are we saying that we support the Fair Share Act? Or is it, I'm a little bit confused.
I think, well, go ahead. Ms. Chun, you want to explain yourself while you are the superintendent.
Thank you. So, here as worded within the motion, as I understand it, given its direction to me as superintendent, and please clarify me, Ms. Chun, if that's not your intent. I will bring back to the committee for committee's approval a recommended legislative agenda that includes a number of items ahead of the next session that the committee can consider. What I was hearing from the speakers is an item that's actually on the November docket, November ballot, that they are also recommending that the committee support. That wouldn't be within the legislative agenda, but it's certainly relevant for the conversation. So, your vote tonight would direct me to bring back to you a legislative agenda ahead of the next legislative session. I would anticipate bringing that to you ahead of the next calendar year, prior to the holidays.
You all set, Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, and I think to Mr. Lay's point, it is two separate, two separate issues. But I would say, and I would say this to the maker of the motion, whether tonight or at the next meeting, the motion that could be made would be for the Lowell School Committee to endorse the Fair Share Act, make that a public statement on our part. I'm guessing it would be unanimous, but you never know. And I think that that, I mean, again, communicating to our legislators, I mean, this is a voter issue. Voters are going to make this determination. So, I think it's a matter of us stating, you know, our, I hope, strong support for this, for this effort, and being able to share that publicly, both at a public meeting like this, but also in terms of being able to share a letter of support with local press that, and I would also include, I'm sure MASC has the same kind of efforts going on that we could sign on to an existing letter of support there. The, I think, in terms of legislative agenda, I think it's great for us to be able to consider that. I think, you know, we're all functioning members here in the community, and we have the responsibility to advocate what, for what we think is important on our own. But I think if the administration wants to take a look at some things and make some recommendations, we can certainly consider those. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
So, I want to start by saying I definitely support the direction of this motion. I actually reached out to Ms. Chun for clarity about it because I saw that there could be a lot of potential within it. I do want to thank the speakers for coming out and speaking specifically towards the Fair Share Amendment Act, and I do agree with my colleague, Ms. Martin, about potentially having very strong wording saying that we endorse as a body that act, because I do think that that makes a very powerful statement in our community, but also really letting our families know where we stand and that we are trying to advocate for the public schools in the city and for all the other benefits that the Fair Share Amendment does allow. So, thank you for the motion.
Any other comments? Here none. On the favor of the eye, opposed by no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to six point two, motion by Ms. Doherty, request the Family Resource Center return to previous dates for registering pre-K and kindergarten classes. Second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion's pretty simple. It speaks for itself. It stems from my concern about the support we're providing to families at the Family Resource Center. And I know this committee and previous committee, we've made a lot of improvements in services, bilingual language. Last meeting, I asked for going back to more extended hours. Many of our families, as you know, are not in that 1% or even making $100,000 or above. For them to miss time off work because they have to go to the family service, Family Resource Center, sorry. This issue specifically around registration for pre-K and kindergarten, it's come to my attention through a variety of community stakeholders, specifically parents who, if the last lottery is, I think it's in the middle of August, it's very late for families to be making plans. It's very late for schools to be getting their final assignments. And I think it has been one of the reasons that, at least from the Board of Health people I spoke to regarding the delay in getting all the immigration, the immunization verification done if we have this last thrust of people coming in. So, my recommendation was to go back to the earlier dates. My understanding, most people do finish their registration well before the summer, but that would be my, my goal, is to provide that level of customer service to our families. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just for clarification, the maker of the motion, what date would that be? I mean, what are we talking about? The previous dates for registration? Specifically, what date would that be? Do you know?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm sure the administration could tell us. We used to do it in the winter, I believe.
Mr. Superintendent, any clarification of the date?
I don't have the specific dates. I do believe there was an adjustment to policy that the committee made due to the later, to provide support for late-arriving families into our community through the admission process. Ms. Phillips, do you have the specifics on what date, what date was the shift? And can you clarify if I'm incorrect? I believe that shift was to support newly arriving families to the community.
School committee members, Mr. Superintendent, so that's correct. It was made to allow families who may not know about kindergarten registration to have an opportunity for the schools where there's a high demand. This, the past three years that I've been here, the lottery has always been in May. So, if it had happened sooner in prior years, it hasn't during the years that I've been here for a variety of reasons, one of them being COVID. But this past year, the, families can register in May, and in the first lottery, there were two, two schools that had more applications than, than available seats. So, the other, I think we have 15 kindergarten programs. So, 13 of the programs, everyone who applied in May was able to get their first choice seat, and it was just two, it may have just been one school actually in May that had a lottery. And that school was filled until, I believe, about 65%, but it was a two-round school. So, the numbers of students we were talking really was very small.
So, could you clarify, what was the final date of the lottery? Because I don't know why August sticks in my mind.
So, there is a third lottery for the final 10% of seats. So, again, if there are 50, 50 kindergarten seats available, that means that five seats were assigned in, in August.
You all set, Ms. Doherty and Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin.
So, and I think that this is part of the overall kind of, you know, it really comes down to fairness, that there are still seats available at these, these high-demand schools as, as families may be coming into the district or, you know, just maybe registering late for whatever reason. I mean, from the numbers you're sharing tonight, Ms. Phillips, I do think that it, the system is working. If there are five, you know, five available that are, that are, that's only, those are the ones that are left until August so that they're still available for families, I think that makes sense. And, you know, to Ms. Doherty's point, I can understand wanting to, you know, people wanting to lock down early, but we do still need to keep that option open for families. So, and I suspect that that was not your intention in making this motion. So, I would just say that I think leaving that system as it is at this point makes the most sense, leaving the registration to happen beginning in, in May and then moving forward. But I will say, kindergarten registration used to be March. It used to be like March, April. Yeah.
So, I'm open to withdrawing the motion at this time. I'm looking to, as I said earlier, come up with a better customer service for our Family Resource Center. I thought this was, from what I had been hearing, a bigger problem, but if those are the numbers and it's only five students that are being assigned in the middle of August, we did use to do it in the winter, though. That I was clear on. So, I'm willing to withdraw the motion at this time, and, Ms. Phillips.
And that was five at our, the one school in my mind. We may have had three lotteries in the third round, but up until, in the first round, everyone got their first seats. The second round, I believe everyone got their seats again, except for maybe one or two schools. Typically, that's Pawtucketville and Pine Arts. Sometimes it's Maury, not every time, and, but those typically, in the Bailey, those are lottery schools. The rest, pretty much, you apply early and you get your seat.
But basically, we're talking about less than 10 students who are being assigned in the summer, right? Would that be clear?
So, at the Bailey, we have four rounds. That's 80 students, so 10% of 80 potentially would be eight students to be placed at the Bailey. The same would be for the Maury if it had a lottery, and the same for Pawtucketville.
So, just so I'm clear, are we talking about what total number of students?
Right. So, anyone who goes into the third lottery, we only reserve 10% of seats.
Right. I'm just trying to figure out how many students are being assigned in August.
So, it depends on how many have applied. So, I can definitely pull that data for you. But, for example, there might be 10 seats available and only three people applied for the lottery, for the final lottery.
Right, right.
And so.
I mean, I think in, just in fairness of, you know, you had the motion on Friday. If you want to just give us an update on what numbers we're actually talking about, I'm not looking to move forward with a change if, as my colleague said, it's working. But we've had a couple of issues with. we've had a couple of issues with, you know, customer service and getting kids all their paperwork done so they can start school with, you know, everything taken care of. So if you could provide us with those numbers, I think that would be great. I'm, I, like I said, I'm just looking to, if things need to be improved, if it's a small, small number, then it's not the issue, obviously. Thank you.
Okay. So Ms. Dory, for clarity, you want to maybe withdraw this motion and then have Ms. Phillips provide the data and we'll go from there? Okay. Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Uh, that motion is withdrawn. We now go to six point three. Motion by Mr. Rossi. Request the superintendent to look into Massachusetts Safe and Supportive Schools Grants to enhance overall safety in all schools across the district. Second by Ms. Morton. Uh, Mr. Rossi?
Motion speaks for itself.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Any other comments, questions? Here none. On favor say aye. Oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry. Now go to six point four. Another motion by Ms. Rossi. Request the superintendent to provide a report on the pros and cons of installing metals detectors at Lowell High School. Second by Mr. Lee. Mr. Rossi?
Motion speaks for itself again through you, Your Honor, to Count Pumpkinella right there. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments or suggestions? Here none. On favor say aye. Oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry. Last motion of the evening by Ms. Thompson. Motion to, motion to have a list of the current cultural field trips that the district is sponsoring this year to advance exposure and education to different cultures to include sites such as Hidden in Plain Sight Exhibit currently showing at the Lowell National Historical Park Visit Center. Second by Ms. Chun. Ms. Thompson?
I think it's really important to make sure that as these school trips and field trips are being organized, that we're really considering using them as moments of, you know, cultural experience as well. Um, Hidden in Plain Sight, the exhibit being shown there is a great way for, um, students to potentially learn about the, the black people that live in the city and, um, lots of stories that they've never heard and have been told and shared. So it's a great way for people to under, understand that. There's a book that's been sold that obviously, you know, does the same thing, but again, many people may not know in Lowell that there are dozens of sites of the Underground Railroad that can be, you know, to, can be seen and visited. And so it's a really, I think, really important to utilize, um, the time for field trips in that way. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments or questions by any members? Here none. On favor say aye. Oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to seven. Reports of the superintendent. Seven point one. School year 2022 through 2023. Strategic goals, actions, and deliverables. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Thank you. This is, uh, my annual proposal and recommendation to the committee. Uh, prior years, we've referred this to a subcommittee where I would provide you a full presentation. We can have in-depth discussion. These, uh, the subcommittee we typically use is the Human Resources and Labor Relations, uh, because these are the goals that are then used for the superintendent evaluation. Uh, I would again recommend that process and, uh, kindly recommend a motion to refer it to the Personnel and Labor Relations Subcommittee for further discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Recommendation, uh, to refer to the Human Relations and Labor Relations Subcommittee. Motion by Ms. Dory. Second by Mr. Lee. Ms. Dory?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I'm fine with referring that to a, the HR Subcommittee. Uh, what I want to comment was a paragraph, um, in Dr. Boyd's communication to us regarding, uh, the importance of clarifying the roles of the school committee, including the organizational value of defining a clear operational line between governance and management. And I think that Dr. Boyd, in his paragraph, he recommends that we, um, have a couple of discussions, one-on-one, which, um, is not in the spirit of open meeting law, and specifically in executive session. I think my colleagues might be aware there are very clear, um, purposes for executive session. And I think that this would not fall into them. I, I went through a list, so reasons for executive section, session, um, have to do with strategy negotiations, collective bargaining, security issues that if it got out in public might be, um, unhelpful, criminal misconduct, reputation, character, property purchases around leasing, um, consideration of interview applicants, uh, conferring with a mediator, discussing trade secrets. I don't know how discussing the line between governance and management would require executive session. I think it could clearly be done in open meeting. I would also recommend that, um, we had talked with previous committees about doing like a lunch and learn with the Mass Association of School Committees. I think at one point we were talking about doing a retreat. I think we could do something a little less intensive than that, have the Mass Association of School Committees come out and talk to us about our roles. I would also, um, call my colleagues' attention to, in today's packet, information about the annual Mass Association of School Committees Conference that's happening in November. All, uh, new school committee members are required by law to attend a, a MASC orientation program. I would highly recommend going to that. I think it's a great resource. But I, I really feel that this idea of, uh, what is the role? The employee doesn't tell the supervisor what the role is. Uh, you know, I'll be, you can evaluate me on my attendance, but don't evaluate me on my customer service. I mean, this is something, if we need clarification on it, we do it in open meeting and we can get guidance from the Mass Association of School Committees. That would be my preferred option. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I, uh, you illustrated and identified item one would be the relevant item. My recommendation is that we further define the duties of the superintendent within my contract. My contract is negotiated, I believe, appropriately in executive session. Hence my recommendation. I would hold to that recommendation. However, if the advice of the committee is that you would like to have that discussion in public, while ill-advised, certainly I'll follow the will of the body.
Ms. Morton?
Well, I think the distinction is that what Ms. Dory is talking about is the, uh, relationship in terms of the committee's behavior, uh, being, uh, called into question as opposed to the superintendent's. So I think that, to Ms. Dory's point, um, requiring that every one of our members goes through the MASC training is great. I think having an open conversation about it can only help. Uh, so I, so I certainly support the motion, um, and I think it makes great sense for us to be able to have those conversations. The, you know, the, the role of the school committee is very well-defined. Uh, but again, I say that having been defining it for 24 years, so, uh, but I think it can be, uh, it could be a helpful conversation. Uh, it, it does not impinge on the contractual language, um, and it's something that we can, I think, have a very, uh, productive, uh, conversation either on this floor or in a subcommittee, however we choose to move forward. But the, uh, including the insights of MASC, I think is a very helpful thing as well.
Okay. Ms. Dory?
Uh, sorry. I wonder if we, do we want to make a motion because I think it was prior committees who asked for, um, a workshop with MASC. They called it a retreat, uh, and we could schedule it, you know, around the, the convenience of the committee members. I'm sure that MASC would have someone available to meet like on a Saturday if you were open to that. But do you think we should make a new motion about that since we have so many new members?
Would, would that be different, uh, meeting? Like would be a secondary meeting besides the subcommittee?
Well, or we could invite them to come to the HR Subcommittee meeting. I'm, I'm open to whatever. I'm not chair, I'm not on that committee. Whatever makes sense to the body, but I think that, you know, having a discussion, um, about our role with the guidance of MASC would be helpful within the constraints of the, the Personnel Subcommittee would be fine. So I just want to refer to the Chair of Personnel.
What, what I would say is that, I mean, the, the impetus to have, um, a retreat really came from the administration. It wasn't from MASC. Um, so I, I think that it, i- if anything, it should be, I don't know what the differentiation is, um, but I believe it has to be a special meeting of the full school committee to kind of give shape to a retreat like that. Um, I'm not sure where the administration is on that, if it's still something that they're interested in pursuing. I know that there were multiple motions made by previous, uh, committee members to do it and it never happened, so I don't know where we are with that. If we could combine this conversation in with other areas that, um, the administration was interested in, that may be the most effective thing.
Uh, just for clarification, are you, uh, more geared towards a special meeting?
I do, I do think it should be a, a special meeting of the full committee as opposed to, I'm a big fan of subcommittees, but in this one, I do think that it should be the, a special meeting of the full.
Do you want to make that to a motion if the members agree? Okay. Motion by Ms. Morton to have a special meeting, uh, to just issue, um, Madam Secretary, could you clarify the, the motion in, in its entirety?
Uh, I don't. To have a special meeting with MASC to, um, discuss the governance and the management skills of the school committee? Roles? Okay.
Uh, it doesn't have to be on a Saturday, correct? Could be regular weekday meeting or?
Well, it could be either again. I mean, you do actually kind of may have a sensible, like a competition.
Okay.
To, you know, definition of, you know, to, to make it, uh, yeah.
Okay. And second by Ms. Uh, Dory. Um, so let's see, we have a lengthy discussion on that. Make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dory?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Just for clarity of record, I want to make sure that I, uh, clarify for the committee, my recommendations within the memo in your packet still hold. Uh, a retreat would not take place, take the place of what I am recommending and my approach would be covered under the confines of executive session. But again, if the committee would prefer to me to present that to you publicly, I can certainly do that. I am just advising and recommending based on the laws of the Commonwealth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think I'm misunderstanding then, cause, um, I, I think, so the conversation regarding goals, this, your, your grid, that is something that we're planning to present to the Personnel Subcommittee as we have traditionally done, and that's going to be the body that will first consider that, then it comes to this committee. Your second, um, request in wanting to have a conversation regarding the roles of the school committee, uh, in our turn, in our governance of, of U.S. Superintendent, that is something that we are talking about, including as part of a retreat with expert guidance from MASC. Um, it does not have a contractual requirement. It, I mean, that, in my mind, that's a conversation around best practices and, and understanding what the rules of the road are. Uh, it doesn't warrant any kind of behind closed door conversation. If you feel it does, I think we're talking about different things.
I'm, I'm saying one wouldn't take the place of the other. Um, I'm providing you a recommendation based on best practices around the country and I'm suggesting that one doesn't take the place of the other, they actually support one another. Uh, so there is a section within the contract that specifically identifies the duties. I'm saying there's a need and value in us further codifying the duties. Uh, that's some, that's a strategy and approach that's been taken around the country based on my research that's been effective in large, complex urban districts, and I'm recommending that, that we take that approach here based on the history and the systemic needs of this organization. One doesn't take the place of the other, actually they complement one another. So, um, fully supportive of the retreat. I think that's a best practice as well. I just want to make sure that the record's clear that one doesn't take the place of the other.
So what you're, um, recommending is that when we get to the point where we're having contractual understandings, contractual conversations regarding moving forward with the new contract, you'd want to be able to include a revised duties conversation?
No, I'm, I'm not recommending or requesting another contract. I'm saying that we specify and can further define vague language within the contract referencing duties of the superintendent in relation to the school committee. That's a best practice utilized elsewhere. I've done a considerable amount of research. I'm bringing that to the committee based on the discussion we had, excuse me, last year's evaluation process. That's how it relates. So we had this discussion as a part of last year's concluding evaluation process. I'd conducted the research. I'm bringing back the approach to the committee. The approach that I'm suggesting is for us to codify the roles within the contract, which does specify the duties, but it lists duties in very vague terms. I'm looking to make sure that we can be more explicit there. That's a negotiating process. I would agree with, uh, Committee Member Doherty. It's not for one to specify or define for the other, it's actually a mutual negotiated conversation.
Yeah, I, so, yeah.
So, um, the superintendent's recommend that we, we have this subcommittee meeting. It's to, it's a, uh, supplement to the special meeting of retreat that you have in mind. Great. That, that would be.
Personnel Subcommittee is only dealing with the, the goals that have been set forth by the superintendent for us to approve.
Okay.
Retreat is something else and apparently there's a contract conversation.
And so we, we took that vote on that special meeting slash retreat already, right? So now we have to take a vote on this, uh, special, not a special, the subcommittee meeting as well.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, need a motion?
Yeah.
We are, we are first and second. We did, we had second already originally. Cause, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry.
This is now a retreat slash special meeting?
No, this one is a subcommittee.
Yes, no, I know that.
Yeah.
Just to, for clarification, the vote, the mo- motion we voted on was for a special meeting. You, you, you want that to also be slash retreat?
Yeah, the special meeting for the, I think we have that, I think we have all of the special meetings.
For a retreat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Dory?
So I, my understanding is we are going to reach out to MASC about a special meeting slash retreat. We're going to talk, discuss goals and strategies as part of the Personnel Subcommittee, and I would like to just say for Doc, to Dr. Boyd that after the retreat, if he wants to have an executive session to specifically address his contract, I think that contractual language is one of the stated reasons for executive session, uh, but I think we should do those other things first. That would be my recommendation. I'm not against doing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, no, any, any more comments, questions? All right. Uh, that's great discussion. We now go to the next line item, seven point two. 2022 MCAS Results and Accountability Report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the first iteration of the full MCAS, uh, administration since prior to the pandemic. We didn't, uh, have MCAS in 2020. There was a half administration in 2021. 2022 was in the spring. So we have now what the state has identified as new baseline data. Uh, Mr. Skinner will share with you what the new baseline data tells us and what that means in terms of accountability for our schools. Mr. Skinner?
Thank you. The members received a memo in your packet outlining the details of, uh, the, the results and the accountability, uh, context. Um, in general terms, I can say that, uh, so we, the state has decided to use 2019 and 2022 and for accountability purposes to combine the results of the two to set a new baseline with a slightly more weight being put on the 22 results versus the 2019 results. Um, baseline meaning that, that that will be a new, uh, a new metric that we will use to gauge our progress in, uh, against from now on. Uh, the state also recommended to us that the results this time are not suitable for making comparisons. So I'm one who's dying to find out how did they do in Brockton? How did they do in Springfield and so on? But that's distinctly discouraged. The results are not valid, uh, at this time for, for doing that, that type of comparison. Uh, there's also no full accountability determination this time. So no schools, regardless of results, will be called, uh, underperforming or chronically underperforming if they weren't in that category previously. Similarly, uh, underperforming schools will not change their designation based on these results, at least not now. Um, the, there is some talk about the commissioner going to the Board of Education to seek permission for some schools in some categories to be freed from those designations, but no new schools will be added. There are no indicator targets, another change for us that we, we enjoy seeing how we're performing, um, compared to targets. There are no indicator targets given in this report this time. There are no indicator targets given in this report this time. I can say that participation is one area that is remarkably high in Lowell. So the participation rates across all cohorts and all subgroups was in the high 90s. The vast majority of the 98 or 99% of participation in the MCAS testing this spring, that is remarkably high and a, and a commitment to our schools. So in general terms about the, the achievement results, the state and Lowell follow similar patterns and similar trends. So for example, comparing to the last year, 2021, as Dr. Boyd said, there was a partial administration of tests. But comparing the results since then, we see improvement and, and recovery from the dire times during the pandemic. And that is particularly so in math and science. And then there are some areas of particular concern. So ELA, particularly writing, is showing lagging growth. There's a particular issue with ELA in grades five, excuse me, grades three through five. And that's both in our Lowell results and across the state. Some of these things, when you think about it for a moment, makes sense. The, the third graders who took the test this spring were in kindergarten when we had the pandemic, right? When we started the pandemic, the kids who were in, the fourth and fifth graders were in either first or second grade. So they have had a different educational experience over the last few years and in really critical formative years for elementary school students. So therefore, you know, we, we, we end up seeing that the, that the deficit in those grade levels, less so in high school, where there's been a much more robust recovery, both in Lowell and at the state level. They, they tend to mirror each other. One really positive note is if we look at our growth scores, in almost every subgroup, right across every grade level and subgroup, the growth scores are in the typical range with a couple of exceptions. But, but it's very, very positive outlook that say, regardless of where our kids are starting and what their achievement level is, they have made significant growth, and they are banded in what we call the typical range between 40 and 60 in almost all categories. And then I, I can keep talking, but I'll, I'll pause for a question in a minute. But one really important detail we should remember about the results, and the state emphasized this, there was an incredible loss of learning time through student absences. So again, in, in Lowell, yes, and across the state. In 2021, 18% across Massachusetts, 18% of all students had chronic absenteeism, meaning over 10% in 2021. In 2022, it's been 28% chronic absenteeism across the state, across the state. And similar, right? And so the, the state calculated that 1.7 million school days have been lost to student absenteeism across the state in, just in this year alone. So you're talking about the 2022 results, they're being compared to 2019 pre-pandemic, and we're into recovery mode, but we have to take account of the fact a lot of school time has been lost. And I, I may, I'll finish if I can by saying that, that we are buoyed by looking at, there's a network called the Urban Schools Network. And when we compare Lowell, an urban school district, with other urban schools and the Urban School Network, at every benchmark we choose to examine, more Lowell schools beat that benchmark than the Urban Schools Network. So there's a couple of cited in, in your report. I think the 50th percentile is one we looked at. A higher percentage of Lowell schools are above the 50th percentile than in other urban school network, in the other school, other urban districts in that network. Similarly for the, I think the 25th, 25th percentile is also cited in there. So very positive overall outlook for Lowell and a credit, I think, to our schools, our teachers, all professionals, all the paraprofessionals, and everybody that worked in schools, our school leaders and the leadership they showed through the pandemic, doesn't negate the fact that there are deficits, and we have a lot of improvement yet to make. But it's a, it's a good interim result.
You also, Mr. Skinner, Mr. Superintendent, any comments or questions by the members? Ms. Maun?
Thank you. So can I ask if you could maybe walk me through one of these grids? I'm at the Districtwide Accountability Results page, there's not a number, I'm sorry. I can't give you better directions.
There should be a page number, I'm sorry that there's not.
Oh, that's okay, but I'm just, you see where I'm looking?
I'm looking at the second page where it says measures, is that the one?
Nope, I'm deeper in. On the Districtwide Accountability Results?
Yes.
So there's a number of grids that follow?
Yes.
Could you kind of walk me through what these are actually saying?
Sure. So at the first grid that you're looking at, in that area that you're talking about, has ELA achievement scores for non-high schools. This are elementary and middle schools. So all, if we look at that top line, it gives us for all students, the composite, or basically the average across our district for 2019 was 493.4. And the, the, in 2022, the, the similar score for all students is 484.8. And then below that, it just breaks out into various subgroups.
So talking about a, a total number of students of 6,600?
Correct.
And so 493.4, out of what?
I believe that the, that the range is from, I think, 460 to 560 offhand, I think it is.
That, I mean, that is extremely helpful, thank you very much, because I was looking through all these and trying to, you know, make some sense of it. I mean, I do think that, I mean, MCAS, it's one measure, you know, it's, it's one, it's one of many. I do think that, you know, we're coming off not only, you know, pandemic testing, which was skewed because of the situation, but in the years prior to that, we had, you know, fallow years too, where they were changing over the system and weren't using it, you know, saying that it couldn't be a true representation and, you know, so there's, you know, the last four to five years have been very uneven, I think, in terms of what we can really take from, from MCAS. I can appreciate that they're, the weighting that they're using, because I do think that the 2022 numbers are more, in, more accurate, more indicative of, of where we're really at. And I don't think anyone is surprised that, that we have deficits to address. I mean, we've literally been handed millions and millions of dollars specifically to address the, the deficit, so we know that. But I do, I, I, I thank you for, for pulling the information for us. I think, I'm sure Desi has their reasons in not wanting to give us the opportunity to make comparisons across districts, they're pretty clever. But I do think that as we move forward, it is, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get back to a place where we can have real world numbers to make comparisons, not only within our district, but with, with urban districts and, and being able to kind of see, you know, where we land in the landscape.
If, if I may add, I think what, what I feel is important about the results is what we're doing, how can it be useful to us? And I'm happy to tell you, in the schools, there's some really neat work where there are two, two examples I'll give you. You can take the results from last school years, that if you're a math teacher in grade six, for example, or a social, an ELA's teacher in, in grade three, you can take the results of the students you had last year and look to see which strands or elements students did really well on versus others. So you might, I know, for example, that, that we've known in one place where we decided there's a relatively poor response in terms of poetry, right? So you know, you can use those results to figure out, where do we need to beef up our programming? And then that's looking at your students from last year, how they performed. And then teachers can take all the results for the students who you have today in front of you, and for each individual student, look at where their strengths and weaknesses are. And so this really great work going on in schools around using the results to get after where the deficits are and try to help them, help the students.
Yeah, it's.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think what's important here, and I think Ms. Martin's words are spot on, we've become, uh, it's become really ingrained within us since No Child Left Behind to look at test score data as being a measure of school quality. We've learned over the course of time that there's multiple measures that should be utilized to really understand schools' performance. And what we know here, and to the credit of Desi, is understanding that test scores here, while it's providing us important information about where our students are performing, really doesn't provide us information, given the course of the pandemic about school performance, hence the reason around the definitions they've used on accountability and/or not using it for accountability purposes. So there just needs to be a, a bit of a recalibration for how we view it. I think there's, looking at it as baseline data, understanding that there's extraordinary value at the student level to know where our students are performing, but also at the same time, understanding, and I think Desi's understanding this rightfully is, this is not a measure of our schools alone, this is an outcome of a global health crisis here where it had an impact on all aspects of our lives. But I want you as a committee to know, as well as our school community to know, that our schools are well-prepared to move forward, move ahead. Our school year is, has started off extraordinarily well for our young people, and our classrooms are ready to accelerate learning on behalf of our young people. This is another data point added to the landscape, and it further validates the many data points that this committee has viewed, and certainly our schools have viewed throughout the course of the pandemic. So there's nothing new here, nothing unexpected, all as expected, and it's another data point for us to further understand the amount of recovery, post-COVID recovery that's required within our classrooms to accelerate learning and overcome any type of learning loss that has occurred. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we submit that as a report of progress.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, we'll go to the next line item, report on motions, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mayor. We place the report of motions within your packet periodically, so you can see a status of, of the reports that may not have been processed yet. But those are the reports that we are tracking, we track every motion that is submitted by the committee. So if there are no other questions, we just submit that as a report of progress.
Ms. Thompson?
I actually have a few ones that I would like to go over. On the front page where it says ongoing reports, there's supposed to be an ongoing report that I asked for regarding incidents of discrimination, racism, and bullying. And that should have been an ongoing report that's listed at top. Hold please. There's another one, and I don't think there's a, oh, there's a page number, page 11, which speaks towards a list of contractors' partnerships. I was wondering if, if Billy Joe had an opportunity to go to that meeting, if it already took place, the meeting with the suppliers, we were looking to, they were supposed to have a meeting in October, not sure if that took place already? Okay, okay, so I'll be waiting for that then. So that one is as it stands, and I go, and yes, there's another one on page two. Where is it? Yes, the one about the trainings offered to teachers and staff has been in progress since, since May. So I was just wondering where, where, where we are with that information. And that's it, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, you want to just take a note or make a comment?
Noted.
Good, thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Your Honor, I would also like to add, under the ongoing reports, we, we had a motion that passed in July asking for monthly updates on the Lowell High School construction project. That's on page 16. And, and I think the motion was monthly or more frequently as needed if something came up. We haven't gotten an update yet, so I just wanted to bring that to the Superintendent's attention. And then on page seven, we had, we had gone out to bid about a mental health audit, a third-party mental health audit, and we had no respondents. I really think that we need to try again, and perhaps do what we're waiting to do with the Personnel Subcommittee. We had sent, two weeks ago, we had a motion, I know you weren't here, but we had a motion asking for a, outside, an RFP for a human resources audit, but to have it go to HR first to discuss the scope, which is what we met last week, but it wasn't on the agenda. So with this one, Mental Health Services, where would be the best? I'm, I'm open to the Superintendent's thoughts. If we go to Subcommittee to come up with a scope for an RFP and put this RFP out again, if there's a Subcommittee that he would prefer go to, I'm, I'm open to suggestions. But I think to come up with a very clear scope of what we would hope to get from a mental health audit. For me personally, I'm thinking, looking at the direct services we're, we're providing to our students around mental health and, but there are other aspects that could also be addressed.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. What, what would you be looking to discuss specifically at the Subcommittee?
The scope of the RFP. I mean, rather than just put out another RFP, we didn't get any response. This motion was from December of last year, so we're coming almost on a year. That we, you know, it's been a slow process. So I'm thinking that if we clarify what would be in the scope of the RFP, and I gave the example of the HR audit scope, the rezoning, we, we meant to look at what would be the scope of an RFP about rezoning. So that's where I thought, and I, I just thought Subcommittee would be a place to hammer out, you know, the clarity around the RFP. If you don't feel we need that, do you want to just rebid it or?
I think the best, the best approach would be to discuss it with our Director of Mental Health Services, who started with us this year, so I'll bring that back and gain his advice on it.
Okay, good. Because I would like to, as I said, bring that out. We, we had this motion passed in December of last year to get an audit, to get an outside party to come in and help us make sense of providing the best mental health services. That was it, that and the monthly updates. If we could get those about the high school project, that'd be great.
Ms. Thompson, more motions?
There was one more, my apologies, Mayor. Again, on the same page, page seven, we did get a report back on financial wellness being the kind of standard, we're doing the basic level, and I had spoken to the fact that that's not enough for us. So I was just wondering where that's going to live or where that conversation goes from there. But it just, as it says completed, it looks like there's not going to be more conversation on it, and I did not want that motion to just die in that state. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, you want to note that or make a comment? Noted, thank you. Any other comments? Here none, we'll go to the next line items. The following are motion responses, starting with 7.4, motion 06, CAO of 6422 by Ms. Doherty regarding sex education in middle schools. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have quite a few questions and concerns regarding this one-page report. It was actually written by Ms. Desmond, so I don't know if the Superintendent is able to answer these questions.
I can try.
Okay. So in the report, it says that we have six middle schools with health teachers. And the amount of time varies, so what are the other schools doing? I mean, and I included, I'm, I, we have the LeBlanc therapeutic is seven to 12, so that's middle schoolers. The Bridge is middle schoolers, but we have 11 middle school, if we include the alternative and the K to eights. So only six have health, and I'm just wondering what the other schools are doing.
Yeah, so they would have it integrated or aligned within their spiraled curriculum, so these are decisions and choices they can make within their school site councils, parents, teachers, and principal about how they allocate budget to positions. So the positions you're seeing are positions that were allocated within the school site council budget. If they don't have a position, that means they're meeting the standards in another way. I would have to get you specifics, I wouldn't be able to provide specifics.
I, I have to say, this is a major concern for me. Not, I mean, it was brought to our attention through the civics program last year about sex education, but then to find out only six of our middle schools even have health, it's integrated into the program. I think we might want to have a discussion about that should, whether that should be a guardrail that every school needs to have health, given the times we're living in. I, things about self-care can. we're living in, things about self-care, consent, well beyond drugs, well beyond just sex education. The other thing, so I'm not sure what would be the next step with this. If we... I don't feel this is enough, and I think we need to have more discussion around it.
So, the guardrails, the budget guardrails, they come to you each budget season? You do approve those each budget cycle early on in the budget process. The budgets go out, and the budget books go out to schools in March. Prior to that, you receive a presentation from Ms. Turner on what those guardrails look like. I think it's also important to note that allocating a specific teacher and a specific course is not necessarily the same as meeting standards and aligning curriculum. So, there's different approaches and different strategies that schools have. What you're looking at there is an allocation of resource to a specific teacher. So, we could certainly pull that authority from the local control. We can pull it from the teacher, the principal, and the parents at each local school community and bring that control back to the school committee. We could do that. Those are the options that the committee has. You have full control over the budgeting process. That comes to you roughly in the February to March timeframe before budgets go out to schools, before the budget books and the allocation goes out to schools.
I think that March would be late to be looking at what are we actually doing around health instruction at the middle school level. Maybe the best thing to do would be to refer this to the Curriculum Subcommittee. Does that make sense? And ask for a full report on how, you know, I mean, because Ms. Desmond mentions here that, or maybe it was when I asked her, they're following the standards that the state sets up on issues of contraception, human sexuality. But as you might recall, there was a very questionable video that was being shown, which brought this to my attention in the first place. So, I'd be looking for a more fuller explanation of how we're covering health at the middle school level. And I think it could be in this context of a Subcommittee, if my colleagues are amenable to that.
You want to put in a formal motion to refer to the Subcommittee, the Curriculum Subcommittee?
Yes, I need a more comprehensive report than this that discusses how each school is educating our students around health issues. And obviously, the sex education is one piece of the health curriculum, and I would refer that report to go to the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Okay, so that's a motion by Ms. Doherty, second by... Any second? Second by Ms. Moore. Do you have a comment also, Ms. Moore?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. You know, and I do think that basically, the initial motion is very clear on what we're looking for. So, I think getting, you know, the report back that basically tells us that six middle schools are doing something and what teachers are doing in terms of, you know, the task force, really doesn't answer the fundamental crux of this question. So, I think referring it to curriculum, perfectly fine, we can get into it with more depth. But I do think that that... This was the kind of, you know, what we're requesting now to do in Subcommittee is what really was, I believe, kind of what was outlined in this initial motion. So, I am hopeful, as we get to the Subcommittee stage, that we'll have more comprehensive information to be able to discuss. Thank you.
Wonderful. No other comments? We'll go to 7.5. We're going to do that, except at the end, the report of progress. Do it now. Okay. All in favor? Say aye. Or say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to 7.5, motion seven, C E E O of 9722 by Ms. Doherty regarding enrollment analysis. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sorry to be taking up so much time. I want to thank the administration for the enrollment history update, and I guess I just had a couple of questions. It's noted on the second page, after the cover letter, that the analysis that we are provided with, the information, is from September 8. And I know that October 1st was the date that we had to get the data to the state. Well, it's saying here that they're expecting more enrollment. You don't need it by October 1st? I'm just wondering if that number's changed. Sorry.
The October 1 timeframe is around a snapshot of timeframe that then initiates the reporting process that goes through a significant validation and review process. We're currently undertaking that process. It's not the submission date, so it's all... This is often confusing to many people. October 1 is the count. It's an extremely important count for the committee, for school districts around the Commonwealth. That stipulates your enrollment going forward for your next budget, but the October 1 is the cutoff that then begins the validation process. So, it's any student who's enrolled by October 1, but then it goes through a validation process that typically takes, Mr. Skinner, approximately a month. Would that be accurate? Approximately a month. So, you'll get the final report once we go through that validation process. We'll get it back from the state of, here's your final tally, final number for the October 1 count.
So, do you want to have that more in-depth discussion when we get those final numbers? Because this saying, they're expecting more, so I don't want to ask questions based on numbers that are still in flux. Let's put it that way.
I think you would expect, so your second quarter budget update is where we start to do our forecasting for the next year. So, you're getting your quarter 1 budget update now. By the time you get your quarter 2, we'll have the final validation of all of that data going into next budget year. You often get that right from Ms. Turner, as she starts to do her forecasting for the next year.
Okay, so I'll look forward to those updated numbers. For now, I think the overarching question for me is, are we at capacity at each of our schools? And, I mean, there were some things, inconsistencies, like some of the... Some of the data didn't include 22 to 23, the last, the year that we're currently in. For instance, if you go to, these pages aren't numbered, the second two pages don't go 22 to 23. Some places they did, and some places they didn't, so I'm not sure what that was, why that happened, or if anybody has an explanation for that.
Our enrollment is up across the board this year compared to last year's count. Once we get the validation, we're confident that there will be an increase, but I can't give you specifics, so until I get it fully validated, I just think that would be inappropriate of me to report. But right now, we have high confidence that there's an increase in enrollment compared to last year's October count.
But if you look at 2017, based on the numbers we have in front of us, we had close to 300 more students in 2017 than we have this year, so far. I mean, that number might change. We also added programs. So, I'm just, I mean, I'm trying to get a sense of, we had the situation at the STEM Academy, for instance, which has been quite extensively overcrowded, where if we had capacity at other schools, why did we continue to put students at the STEM when we didn't have classroom space for them?
So, there's... I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. So, there's two different parts to the conversation. It's not just about the number of kids, it's also about their needs. So, we've also seen an increase in English learners, for instance. At the early levels of English language acquisition requires separate classroom space. So, one student in a general education classroom would be one classroom space. That same student might require both a general education classroom, as well as a specialized instructional space for some specialized needs. We're seeing increases in the needs amongst our population across the district, English learners, as well as some highly specialized special education needs that Ms. Del Rossi has spoken about quite frequently at the committee table. There's different needs in terms of space based on the needs of our students. So, there is a need of space based on the overall population, but that population, you could have the same number of students with different needs, which would require, could require significantly more space. So, we're seeing both of those two conversations come into play. We have a... We don't have... We have roughly a similar number of students. We don't see the decline in enrollment like other urban communities. Boston, for instance, has seen 10%, 20% decline in overall students in the last few years. We haven't seen that. We've seen slight decline in enrollment. That's starting to increase again now that we're out of the pandemic, and then on top of that, we're seeing an increase in need, particularly increases when you go back to 2017, English learners that you talked to, the committee talked about during Subcommittee, that you'll see come up with some additional support here. So, it's important to understand both of those. The second thing, if you recall, as a committee, when we talked about space, we had to establish partnerships with our community partners around early learning, because we didn't have enough space internally for pre-K classrooms. So, some of the programming we've also established requires a significant amount of space as we move to universal pre-K. So, we've added additional programming based on needs and strategy, and at the same time, we haven't seen declining enrollment that would free up that space across the district in a way that some other urban communities have, which I think is a testament to the work of this community and the investment in public education. We're also seeing that increase, and we're starting to see it come back to pre-pandemic levels. Not quite yet. I don't think we're going to see a complete return with this October 1 count, but we're seeing it trending back in that direction.
Thank you. I guess I'm still... The question is if we had, even with an increase in English language learners and special education needs, we have been a district that's provided those services for a long time. So, are you saying we had to cluster it more in, let's use the Rogers example, when we may have had room at other schools? Is that why?
No, not necessarily. You have... We have more English learners.
Right.
So, it was a greater proportion of our students. So, I want to say off the top of my head, previously, in years 2017, it was less than 25%. Now, we're looking at approximately 28%. When you talk about a total population size of our school district, that three percentage point, we can do the... I can do the math and try to calculate it out. You're talking about hundreds of young people that now need separate classroom space. So, even though you're seeing 14,300 roughly students versus 14,500 or 600, there's a greater proportion of those youngsters that require separate space. So, we're not clustering them into schools. Matter of fact, quite the contrary for English learners, where actually, we support those youngsters in every school. The other population that you're referring to, where we do cluster them, is specialized special education schools and special education programming. That would be the sub-separate spaces that we do strategically around the district to put youngsters with like needs. That also has a significant amount of need for space, but it's different than our English learners. I'm not saying that you're seeing clustering in a certain school. I'm saying that the overall population, the demographic data is shifting where there's a greater need amongst the population that we currently have.
But that's... If I could just one... It still doesn't address that some schools are not at capacity and some are overcrowded. And I just wanted, one last thing I want to ask, and it's not numbered, so I don't know how to refer you to it. It's in the seat allocation breakdown. You have, under the Rogers School, it says 22 to 23 average per strand kindergarten, 13. That number seems really low. And I don't know if anybody can see it, because it's not, the page isn't numbered, so. Is it worth saying the page number? It's like 10th, number 10 in the report. In the middle of the page, it says historical seats allocation grades 5 to 8. Right above that, there's a chart, and it has the Rogers School for the year 22 to 23, 13 students in a strand K. I think you know what I'm trying to get at here. I'm trying to understand how we have allocated the students across classrooms, across the district, so that we're in this situation where we have severe overcrowding at one school and other schools are not at capacity. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question. I think it's a question that the committee's brought up. We go through that analysis pretty regularly. You don't have space in any kind of sustainable way for us to move a full classroom and a full strand. If you have a seat available in one class versus another, we certainly have that. We have certain limits in terms of assigning students across. You don't... We don't have the flexibility to eliminate an entire strand within a school or even an entire classroom and then allocate it over to another building. In any of the prior analyses that we've done, we do go through that continuous analysis. So, one thing you might want to think of, and this is kind of how it works, in order to sustain a strand at a school, not only do you need the classroom space for that year, you need the classroom space for them to grow from, say, kindergarten to first grade and for you to repopulate a kindergarten. You could do, as this committee has done previously in some historic situations, you have what we refer to as a bubble grade, where you might have one class that starts as kindergarten, they'll flow all the way up and utilize one classroom. But that would require you to not only have a classroom this year, but also to be able to project that you're going to have that classroom for the next four years. So, that's the type of sustainability of space because of the way our enrollment is currently forecasting that's currently not at our disposal. You could, in any given time, see, one grade at one school might have smaller class sizes than another school, but that doesn't free you up to make a strategic reallocation or reassignment of students. But we go through that analysis regularly. There was some consideration, we thought, during the pandemic, if you remember, we were all the way down to about a little under 14,000 students at one point. That would have given us more flexibility, but our forecast suggested it would come back up, because that was really within our early learners, the non-compulsory grades during the pandemic that we saw being very low. That is picking up now. It's not back to pre-pandemic, but that forecast did hold accurate, and we're up to 14,200. So, when we do space allocation, and I appreciate the time, Mayor, because this does come up quite often, and I'm imagining that U.S. committees get these, committee members get these questions, it requires us to be able to look, not just now and today, but we have to be able to sustain over time for students, so we're not moving students back and forth each year out of a school. It also requires us not to just look at sheer numbers, but also to student needs in terms of the space allocation. That's the question. That was the question at the STEM, was about the EL pullout space. That was the conversation we were having about making sure we had enough classrooms for the L pullout space. So, we go through that analysis regularly. We certainly will bring back to you. Right now, we're seeing that we need more space. We don't have extra space, and that more space is built around the specialized programs that we are currently leasing space. Right now, we're spending a significant amount to lease space for a specialized program. And secondarily, we're looking at additional space for our universal pre-K strategy that we're currently partnering with outside agencies on.
Thank you.
You all set, Ms. Doherty?
Yes, thank you.
No other comments, question? We'll go through the last motion response of the night, 7.6, response to motion 21, COO of 9722 by Mr. Rossi regarding internal hiring process. Mr. Rossi?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the response to the motion. I understand it's only a partial response also from two schools. Just in going forward with getting more of a response, I guess I'm looking more for a rubric and how those answers are weighted and with what points in going forward. So, if I could get more of that information going forward, I'd really appreciate it and getting more of a full answer to the question. Thank you.
No other comments or question? We'll wrap up that portion. Need a motion to accept the reports of the Superintendent, 7.1 through 7.6, as reports of progress by Ms. Turner, second by Mr. Lee. All in favor, say aye. Or say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to 7.7. If there's no comments on home education, need a motion to approve by Ms. Moore, second by Ms. Thompson. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Turner? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to eight. Need a motion to approve the budget transfer of $685,365.96 by Mr. Lee, second by Mr. Rossi. Any comments or questions? Here none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Turner? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Line item 8.2 through 8.7, different positions. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could, I appreciate the expediency of the agenda. I'm just, I want to make sure I put out there, the committee does have a full update from Ms. Turner within your packet. She is prepared to walk you through the first quarter budget update that she typically provides, but if the committee feels confident within the written documents in your packet, that's sufficient for us. I just wanted to flag it and let you know that Ms. Turner is available to walk you through that if there's of interest.
This committee would like to see the presentation by Ms. Turner? Or is everyone... Or is everyone okay? Ms. Mon, did you have a, okay. Everyone's okay with that presentation or you want to go through the presentation?
I think there's an alternative also option is to move this to finance subcommittee, which we've also used that process. It's important to make sure that we continue to get guidance on where we take the budget going forward. This is a unique budget time for the committee. Absent that, there's, is there other areas, Ms. Turner, that you need additional guidance beyond the transfer?
I think it's important for us to discuss the.
Please turn, please turn your microphone on.
I'm sorry. Yes, I do believe that, I can go through the presentation quickly and rather than going through individual details, but we do need to get guidance on where we want to go with the copiers and the, there was one other thing. There were three things we wanted to use fall reconciliation money for that would, we needed to bring up today.
Okay, let's go with that. Ms. Turner?
I, I would be open to going through the presentation right now while we're here and.
Absolutely.
Okay. Before I do start the presentation, I did want to respond to Ms. Thompson's question about the public procurement by women, minority and veteran owned. They have that on there just so you know. But in other diverse businesses certified by the supply diversity office. Just so you know, this is the dilemma we sometimes face. I, I know this is October 19th, that's the day of the next meeting, right? So I can't put it in the packet on the previous Friday. So I'll give an update on the partnership list so that it reserves a spot in your report, but you won't get my voiceover until that night because the training is on the day of our next school committee. And the same thing goes with the copiers. There is a printer copier request for motion or whatever. And they, we had a meeting today and now I can do the entire report this week, but I won't be able to present that to you for another two weeks. So just so you understand the timing, sometimes the meetings make me have to wait until afterward. As far as the presentation, I'll be quick. I just wanted to remind you that it's our goal to be as transparent, timely and consistent with the data as possible. So what we're trying to do is come up with a uniform reporting package that you can tweak so that I know what you need from me. And then we'll do that same format consistently so it becomes familiar data and it's not always fluctuating. The next slide, I don't even think I had, do you guys have the slides up yet? Mine is not showing. Okay. Oh, your TV's wrong. Okay, mine is not showing it, but oh, he's putting it up. But the presentation is just, is it not working? Okay, so I'll just, I'll just say some of what I was going to say and then move through the packet. Monthly, I'm going to give a year-to-date budget report, a revolving account balance report and a grant summary so that you can see the three sources of funding monthly and you'll have the reports and review it. But quarterly, we'll do these presentations that focus on the financial health of the district, which includes current spending, near-term planning, which is strategic fund management, and then a third portion, which would be long-term planning, which is fiscal cliff and sustainability. So we'll talk about three things each period. That's, the current spending would be a review of the year-to-date budget analysis, which is really monitoring all of our spending now. Then the second piece would be to strategize and reallocate. That's through the strategic budget management. We would review projection of your budget busters and that, vacancy savings and the fall reconciliation. If we're fortunate enough to do what we did this year and have that fall reconciliation amount in the suspense account so that we can make deliberate purchases come the fall, once we've had a chance to review stuff, then we would be able to provide you with that data. The third part would be to adapt and that's managing the fiscal cliff. We're monitoring ESSER closely. We're doing fund management to ensure that we're spending first-to-expire funds and the revolving account balances. In the current spending, sorry?
We have it now, so if you want to switch the slides.
Oh, good, good, alright.
So we just finished the three you just spoke of.
Good, yes, that's good. So the current spending, which is found in the year-to-date budget report that I included in your agenda, just so you know, I purposely wrote a bunch of notes on the pages instead of giving you a clean copy because I wanted you to understand the exercise that we go through monthly. Where you know that the budgets are truly built on forecast, so where it's inevitable that we're always going to have to make changes and bring it forward to you. The constant monitoring of the general fund, which is the year-to-date budget report, grants, ESSER and revolving accounts happens, I do it weekly. So every Friday, I look at it and see if anything jumps out. So there will be a consistent and constant need to review and redirect and reallocate dollars to move savings from one line to another. You know, there's often a question of, well, where did the money come from? Well, if we hire someone cheaper, we move that money. So we're constantly redirecting the money. Some examples of reconciling the forecast to actuals includes the vacancy savings, new employees being hired at different rates than budgeted, supply chain shortages resulting in funds not being spent, which means we have that to move to other lines. Bid such as leases can come in higher than expected after the budget was approved, which happened this year. So those type of things trigger us needing to move the money. And another one would be the unforeseen need for additional investment like the copiers. We didn't plan on doing anything and now that we see there is a need across the district, we're researching that right now and that's when we make changes on current dollars. The next thing we do is strategize. We, we always look at the budget busters, which are the salary accounts, sick leave, buyback, out-of-district tuition, substitutes and transportation. It's one of our major goals of the business office to automate many of these systems. We're currently trying to make a dashboard that all the data flows into this dashboard that I could give to you as a cheat sheet and you would have that available when you're out in the community. The above listed accounts are considered budget busters since we can never anticipate swings in, in and out of district placements, the number of retirees and/or students that are placed out of district that need transportation. This example on the next page is just an excerpt or a snippet of what I do. Right now, we don't have an automated way of comparing budgeted FTEs to actuals. So I actually have a list of all of our budgeted FTEs. This is several pages long, but I just gave a snippet. And then I go through actual payroll and compare it. And that's how I determine the vacancy savings. When we have a vacancy savings, we make a detour and use those funds in other ways. The next page is what I really wanted to bring to your attention. As I was mentioning, we did have the unique opportunity this year, and I hope it continues, where we end up having a suspense line or a fall reconciliation line. Because many costs such as the copiers and other issues like that, we don't know the true cost during budget season. So it's always good to have something available. This right here is reconciling what I have tracked with fall reconciliation thus far this year. We started with 2.5 million. The lease increases cost 312,000 more than we had budgeted, so we had to move that money and you approved that in a previous transfer. The early college promise and after-doc programs, those funds were put into the foundation budget, but we, you don't know that at the time. So now we know that we have to actually put that into our budget as a separate line item in the future, the money for the Voke and the money for the Middlesex Community College. That would cost 544,000 for both programs, which the school committee did approve. Here's where the next, there are three additional ones that I want to bring to your attention. The OPM, you all voted at the pre, at the last meeting to accept the permission to enter. But on there, I had said ESSER is the funding source. Well, as you know, every time you try to spend ESSER dollars over 5,000, we have to do a capital X form and wait for approval. So you approved us moving forward so that we can start the process of seeing how much the modular projects truly would cost. So we need the OPM piece in order to move ahead. But right now, I'm asking, is it okay to use the funding source, the fall reconciliation funding source until we get approval? And so do, I don't know if we need a vote. You said yes, but I'm not sure if we need a vote on that or if I can just move ahead with it. So that was one question. The next question was the copier investment. When I first took, you know, came to Lowell, the previous budget had slashed the copier budget in half and that was one of the things I had brought to your attention. We did end up going out to bid. We didn't, there, you know, some people believed that we were doing it to save money. This, we didn't. We didn't decide on the new copy contract on cost. We weren't trying to save cost. We were going out to bid and we were following the law, which is to go with the lowest bidder. One of the things, they do indicate on their contract that they're a high-volume machines, but that when I had a teacher come in and principal, so I could hear firsthand today when I met with another copy company, I heard all of the problems that they're facing with copiers. They're facing like paper capacity issues where the machine, instead of having three trays of paper, it only has one. So they have to stand there and wait. They have issues with the speed of the machines, all of these things. So I met with someone today, another company. We are allowed, despite the fact that we have a contract with an existing vendor, we are allowed to purchase more services from other vendors. I have a great plan and it's, it was, I think it was your motion, Mr. Rossi. And I'll have a thorough report that will explain your options for what we could do with the current vendor and what we can do to still alleviate the problem in the district without waiting until the contracts expire or terminate. So I'll have a nice report for you next time, but we are moving on with that. However, because we would need additional resources, I'm bringing it to your attention today because again, I don't know if that means I need a, you know, approval or if a budget transfer next week or next meeting would be sufficient approval to move the funds from fall reconciliation to the copy line. And then there are, there's another question I have about an ERP Munis investment. It's like buying a tool. If you buy tools, but you don't know how, you don't hire anyone to show you how to use the tool or to implement the tool, then you, you have something just sitting there wasted. We have an excellent ERP system, which is Munis. It has all of the tools that we need onboarded for our people so they're not doing it the old-fashioned way. We could use, you know, electronic onboard. And there's position control that would show us when we have 10 budgeted power positions, but only eight are being paid, it would run out these reports. But City Hall doesn't have the capacity right now in their office to implement all the school-related projects. So they can implement or pilot a lot of the different programs at their office, but there's no one to focus on the ones that are specific to schools. So this is my request to ask for a Munis investment, an ERP investment by hiring someone for approximately $70,000 that would work closely with the city to implement all of the Munis changes that we need. This could be a temporary position. It could be a pilot position of one to two years just to get all of the work that we need done in Munis done. I mean, it's going to eventually save us a lot of time, trouble and, and give us more accurate reporting and timely reporting. I'm not one to ever want to hire, 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 but this one I think is a necessary investment so that we can use the tools we currently have. So those are three areas that I did need to bring to your attention. I can continue on or if you wanted to decide whether these are votes or if you can direct me on how to handle this going forward, those three decisions.
I think unless you have additional guidance, it's going to have to come back to them as a formally posted item anyhow. So you're, we're going to have to bring it back. I think now though, Ms. Turner and for the committee, if you have additional guidance for Ms. Turner before she does the legwork within the next two weeks, that would probably be your best use of time. Because we will have to post it formally on the agenda for them to take action.
Okay. And then just to point out, I also put, I'm just trying to show you how the 2.5 can go quickly. So for instance, I put less cost for RFPs. That is not written in stone because we never know until a bid comes in how much something costs. But if we do the mental health audit, a wage study, all of those things that we currently have going out to bid, those are the things that would, I just put a little placeholder for you there. And then there is two additional custodians due to the construction at Lowell High. There's a need for two additional custodians to assist, they do overnight construction. So we do need two additional custodians. And then the last part was suggested ads that were brought to you in the HR subcommittee and those I put to the side so that you could see which ones were approved. So this is just giving you a summary of the fall reconciliation. And last, we do, we have to pivot, not pause. These are the next school committee's permission for the follow, oh, we need the school committee's permission for the following. The OPM charge to local dollars if not approved on ESSER, raise investment in copiers in response to the concerns voiced by teachers and principals recently, and the ERP investment so that we can automate and modernize a lot of our systems. And then just so you know, the last piece that we'll give every quarter is just the preparation for the fiscal cliff. It is inevitable, there's no way for me to fully avoid it, but we are trying to minimize it and prepare for it so that you guys know going forward and always know that once the fiscal cliff happens, we're going to have to make difficult decisions. With every fiscal decision, we ask, is it sustainable? We strategically place cost in programs that need to recur on the local budget with the intention to put as many one-time only or short-term costs on ESSER. And just so you know, we're constantly monitoring and pivoting necessary to ensure full spending of local dollars and ESSER. So right now, we have to make sure we spend those local dollars so we don't give it back, right? But on the other hand, the ESSER dollars are running out. And this is why we have to come to you sooner and make fast, like the decisions about copiers and things like that so we're not giving money back to the state or the city. And that's my presentation. I hope I went quickly enough, but still got the point across. Hi.
That was a great presentation. Ms. Thompson?
So thank you, Billie Jo. Really great presentation. That, I'm really happy to hear about the copiers. That was my motion from last week, so I'm really excited about that. And I know that the teachers are going to be ecstatic because I'm still getting calls about the copiers. I guess my, my question is, how many, are you aware of how many schools that would cover? How far like reaching the, that would be for, for the schools?
As far as the copiers?
Yes.
I'm actually very excited by the project because once you dig in and you start to learn, oh, I think you have a high-volume machine, but come to find out, it's really their idea of a high-volume machine, things like that. What we plant, do you know there's not but one color copier in the whole district? And I said, well, that, what do you mean? The schools don't have color copiers? They have color printers. So they might have a color printer that costs 25 cents a print where a color copier is only 3 cent. And I'm not focused on savings only. I believe in savings, but still without sacrificing quality to the teachers. So I don't want anyone to hear me say savings and get worried. I'm not doing that. But if we can implement a machine, one machine at every school, that's a color copier. So now they have a color copier that does faxing. It's a copy machine fax and, yeah, color copy and fax and it has speed, paper capacity, all those things. We're going to do one at every school and we're also looking at schools like the STEM. One thing that we didn't realize is when the STEM was given their number of machines when we did the bid, they were given it based upon the student population they had, but then it grew. Remember, we were adding strands every year. So we didn't add copiers as that was going. So they were struggling with copy issues, but not, we're not knowing it's because of how many people are in the building. We're thinking it's just the copy issue. So we do have a full plan. We're going, they're working on it now. We're going to rearrange things. So there are some schools that don't have any issues whatsoever. They don't need more copiers. So if we give them a color copier, now we can take out the one that they, a black and white copier and put it somewhere like the STEM or Lowell High. We're not giving them hand-me-downs. We're going to rearrange so everyone has that fast, fast machine. Like I said, I have all the options laid out in front of me now. I'm starting to understand the lingo of copy machines. So I will give you a very thorough report, but I do believe the schools are going to be happy when they, when we make these changes.
Is that Ms. Thompson? Ms. Mon?
Well, the three decisions you're looking for tonight, I think the two where you're looking to bill against general funds until we can get an approval for ESSER, I do think that makes sense. I mean, I think we're just approving the expenditure, you're assigning it and then if you need to do a journal entry or a, you know, a budget, a budget change, I think that just happens when you get the approval, correct?
Well, to be clear, I don't, I want to be as transparent as possible that if, it's not just a matter of me waiting and then doing an expense transfer in this case. If ESSER declines that, that means we would take on that OPM cost, but then we could still apply for ESSER to cover modulators. So there may, I'm saying worst case is if we paid for the OPM, which is what we need in order to proceed. We still have the option, not the option, but the ability to apply for ESSER for modulators. They might not approve the OPM piece. They did specifically say modulators can be considered in the ESSER funding. So yes, but.
Okay, so I, I mean, I think moving forward, I think that absolutely makes sense. We'll need to get the actual posting for the position to approve it. But in terms of billing it out against local funds, yeah.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
The OPM was actually not something we post. It's something we went out to bid. It's something we went out to bid for already. We, they did, we had two bidders and we picked one and you guys voted in the PTE last meeting. You, the OPM is Door and Whittier. So, we already, we already did that, but that's why I brought it to you because it said the funding source was ESAR and I...
I'm thinking of the ERP. I apologize.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but the ERP, the posting just, yeah, I can get the posting so that you're aware of it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think we have to approve it as an actual posting before it can, right? Because it's not an existing position.
Okay. Yes.
Any other comments or questions? So, we did do a roll call already, right, Madam Secretary?
We did a roll call on the transfer. We haven't done, we haven't, don't have anything on the book.
Okay, so, that is for the next meeting item. So, right now, just to approve the budget transfer and then we'll discuss and take a vote on the actual items at the next meeting. Any other questions or comments? Here none. We'll now go to the next few line items, which are 8.2 through 8.7. These are different postings of positions. Let's bundle them so that we don't have to do a roll call on each, but you're all welcome to make a comment or question on any of them, if that's okay? Ms. Dory?
Just, I'm confused because I thought the Personnel Subcommittee met on these issues, right? We didn't get a report on that, what their recommendations were or, that was last week. So, it seems a little bit like putting the horse before the cart.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Yeah, so the Personnel Subcommittee was on Thursday. We had a 24-hour turnaround to get the posting out on Friday. Dr. Hall did chair that, also has put together all of the adjustments to each of these positions based on, again, the budget report. We need, we're trying to mobilize these so that we can get services for students, the dollars are available, you have transferred and authorized those dollars. Dr. Hall, can you give a summary of the adjustments that were made, the feedback from the Subcommittee and the adjustments that were made so the committee is aware?
Sure, Dr. Boyd. So, I've included the letter that was presented to the Personnel Subcommittee on 9/29, and then I wrote a letter the next day and incorporated all the productive changes that the Personnel Subcommittee recommended. So, what you have before you is a letter going over the positions, which incorporated the changes that the Personnel Subcommittee voted on.
Ms. Dory, you all set?
I'm going to try to find those changes. I was at the meeting, but I, I think just for purposes going forward, it could have been on the agenda that was posted Friday, and then we could have gotten the report, you know, Monday, right? That would have been doable.
Okay, so, what I'm going to do, I like a motion to bundle. I will read each positions, but we just do, and again, you're welcome to ask questions or comments on any of those separate line item, but we just do one roll call vote at the end. So, need a motion by Ms. Dory, second by Mr. Lei, to bundle 8.2 through 8.7. 8.2 is the permission to post Director of English Language Services, grades K through 12. 8.3 is permission to post two district support specialists. 8.4, permission to post human relations assistant, HR generalist. 8.5, permission to post two security guards. 8.6, permission to post attendance monitor. 8.7 is the last one, permission to post bilingual family liaison lead. Any questions or comments on any one of them? Here none. Need a motion to, to approve and post those positions by...
No, no, you have it.
We had already? Okay, just roll call then.
Ms. Chuen?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lei?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Wonderful, thank you. We now go to nine, convention conference request. Any comments or question on these line items? Out of state overnight travel request for Baylen Daily School Little C Specialist. Here none. Need a motion to approve the conference request by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chuen. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chuen?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lei?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
10 is communications. 10.1, invitation from Mass Association of School Committees. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you.